Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board to order. It is Thursday, May 12th, after 7:00 PM. We are meeting at the Lakeville Police Station Meeting Room at 323 Bedford Street, Lakeville. This is an in-person meeting. The first item on our agenda is I make a motion to open a public hearing to amend the zoning bylaw, Section 6.7 Site Plan Review, by deleting existing section and replacing it with new Section 6.7 Site Plan Review, which would include subsection 6.7.1 Purpose, 6.7.2 Authority, 6.7.3 Application, 6.7.4 Submittal Requirements, 6.7.5 Review Procedure, 6.7.6 Performance Standards, 6.7.7 Architectural Requirements, and 6.7.8 Decision, Inspection, Fees, and Appeals. Everybody has that draft bylaw or the proposed amended bylaw in their packet. So at this moment, I'd like to ask any board members if they have any discussion on the site plan review bylaw.
Um, I have one.
Michelle?
Under 6.7.5 Review Procedure, it looks like open space has been actually taken off of that list. And I think it's always nice to have them review it. I know they can give some suggestions sometimes when it comes to native species or something that's, you know, worth noting for protection or something along those lines. So would we be able to add the open space back in under that section?
Uh, we could, I think. Yes, we could. I think we have to do it as an amendment, but yes.
Anything else, Michelle?
I think that was the only note that I had. Oh, actually, nope, I do have a question. Sorry. So with this new site plan review, what effect, if any, would this have on the current density bonus?
It would have none at this point.
None? Okay, so that's still...
Because we haven't changed, proposed changing, we still coverages density bonuses, anything. So now we do have the, a little bit of an overlap, right?
Belts and suspenders of architectural standards.
And then we'll be discussing, well, do we keep that other section in now that we do have architectural review? Once this passes, do we modify it? How do we, you know, let's look at the, you know, do we have a higher density by right? Because we don't need to go through this bonus section and we have the ability to review architecture, you know, for any building and any, or anything that falls under site plan review. So, but that would be the further discussion. The first step was to pass this.
Yep.
It would be something we would work on for perhaps a fall town meeting.
See how it works.
See how it works, exactly.
Okay. Peter, do you have anything?
No, we went through this pretty well when we, when it was drafted up, so.
Jack?
I can hear what Peter.
Nora?
I'm good.
All right, so if there's no other discussion, oh, we have, Nora?
Yes, so normally, just so you can have public input. Check the bar. So I do have on this second 6.7, several questions. I think in general, it's a good step. Some good changes in here. So the first one is 6.7.1.1, the previous, in the previous, I'm looking at the strike through version, just in case that helps. Under that section, it said previously or currently, adjacent areas, blah, blah, blah. Basically, what is going in, what the site plan review shall consider, and sound and dust were listed. I don't see that sound and dust being an issue to be reviewed in site plan. Again, I may have missed it, but that is a concern. I think those are two issues that, certainly sound. I think any site plan review is issues where people are concerned about. And I can either keep going or stop.
Keep going, keep going, okay.
Yeah, I'll look, I'll look.
So I think it's just the strikeout version, 6.7.2, did not strike out the word industrial. I think from the file version, it just says authority, which I think is the intent, but just wanted to clarify that. Again, in the strike through, with the information required by the applicant, number 17 currently says, "Any building over 35,000 cubic feet should be accompanied by an engineering plan drawn by certified architects," et cetera. That's not on the new list of requirements. So it's unclear whether that, you know, currently that's in there for a reason, I don't know, but it doesn't seem to be in the new version. Then moving on, 6.7.3 Applicability, the new section of applicability, number three, change in occupancy or of an existing structure occupied by a business or industrial use, which increases the previously approved occupant load by 10%. As my question, what does that mean, occupant load?
So that's actually an amendment that we made previously to site plan review at the last town meeting or two town meetings ago. And it was because there was a lot of, not upheaval or uprising, but just people had questions, concerns about existing buildings that changed tenants. And with that change in tenant, they may increase their occupant load. So buildings are typically designed with parking and all their infrastructure based on the original applicant. So it was a method to re-trigger the site plan review method if they increased their occupant load.
So occupant could be customers, employees?
In theory, yes, but it, I guess it depends on the business, and I would leave that up to the zoning enforcement officer as far as how that's typically been historically interpreted. Or if that, you know, sometimes that's for sewage disposal or water usage reasons, the occupant load is determined by that.
Right, right.
I think that there is a definition as far as highest occupancy at a given shift. So it's not a cumulative thing, it's at one time during any course of the business day.
All right, so.
But again, it was, it was put in to try and catch a sort of a review of something that existed because it was a significant change that happened that the planning board wasn't able to review that.
So you weren't reviewing all changes?
We weren't able to review any of it. It was just a building permit, and then somebody came in and said, "We want to put in an urgent care instead of an insurance office." So then all of a sudden, there's maybe more traffic flow, so
Absolutely.
Increase parking, so that's why we wanted to be able to review that.
Perfect, excellent. Number six on that same list, "New construction modification or addition to any residential structure which will disturb more than 43,560 square feet of ground." The question on that is, and that is just reworking, again, must be like the occupancy where that was in the previous version, you're reworking it to not split between residential and commercial and just have one site plan review list, which makes sense. But I think the concern I have is, is, you know, what, what triggers that? Because, you know, I go back to the, I know that's under applicability, but in other words, how, you know, I think under commercial, it's easier, but under the residential, how is that come to the attention of anyone that a site plan review is required? And with that question, does it need to be clarifying language that says, you know, that outlines in this zoning bylaw how that is triggered, whether it's by a building permit application that needs to have a checkbox that says how much list, you know, how much disturbed, or, you know, I guess that's the question.
Mark, I would defer to you on that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, right across from you, that there was that those lots went through site plan review.
Correct.
For this section, right, and.
It was my understanding from the zoning enforcement building inspector that even though the bylaw existed, it was never enforced and never brought before for site plan.
I see.
It took some fairly abusive action of drainage patterns, et cetera, to bring it to the site plan. So I guess my understanding is that may be the only property, even though there have been many properties
Right.
under Form A, ANRs, et cetera, that have triggered the bylaw that didn't trigger the law.
But they didn't, but they didn't come through, is what you're saying.
Correct, correct. And I mean, basically, my understanding, there's been issues, for instance, with, you know, drainage from these lots that change, change the topography due to that acre of disruption. We're on Pierce Ave, School Street area. It's my understanding that there were some pretty big Form A changes there that never went under review.
Where was this?
My understanding is Pierce Ave and School Street.
School Street. So I believe they didn't reach the acre disturbance requirement. And I can give you a little bit of history on, that was, the acre thing was never a thing until about a year or two ago. That was also a bylaw change recently. It was very recently became the acre because it was like 3,000 square feet prior to that. And because it was 3,000 square feet, it ended up getting ignored because every septic system replacement would require a site plan review. Every, you know, somebody was going to pave a driveway, a site plan review. And because of the residential component, it just, and again, I wasn't on the planning board when that happened, but it just wasn't happening, so just because it would be triggered by put a mailbox post in, you know.
Yeah, sure, 3,000 square feet, right.
So they bumped it up to the acre.
Yeah.
Within, I'm going to say, the past two years.
Yeah, I think it's been maybe double that, but yeah, it's definitely been more than two years. Because I mean, COVID, it was definitely pre-COVID, and at least a year, if not two.
It could be, but I mean, it's, it's a lot to disturb an acre. And I, and I agree with you, it's, it's a fine line we walk because the, the house lots on School Street, the reference, they didn't disturb an acre. But it's just unfortunate, they cut through the stone wall and all the sheet flow no longer carried behind this stone wall. It all ran out through every opening. Now it runs down the road, silt fills, that, you know, the DPW has had to kind of extend the natural swale that's along Pierce Ave because it all runs down school and with the silt, it'll all just flow out by the stop sign. So.
The, I mean, other lots that I come to mind that were developed over the last few years since the bylaws been in place, on Highland Ave, almost a county street, the farm that was there, the silo that used to exist, those lots were pretty, really, I have to imagine, it was more than an acre disturbed. And the end result is they, you know, it's standard practice. No one wants to keep their own water, so the lots are graded from the house to the street. And that's the case that was done there, if I recall, previously, you know, that was a low area there, thinking back to when the little Christmas displays were there and all that. I think that was kind of a low area below the street, whereas if you look now, all those house lots are sloped to the street. And of course, we don't have drainage in the street. I mean, in the city where there's closed drainage systems, you slope to the street. We don't have that, and you know, I just happen to notice, you know, in rainstorms, you've now got water in the street. It drains down and now goes into someone else's property, you know, wherever the street slot was put in previously. So, and I, like I said, I haven't measured, I didn't measure when they were there. So I'm just, but again, it comes down to, well, who does measure? Who is looking at that one acre? How do we solve that problem of determining, is it an acre, is it less than an acre? Because it is tough, I mean, it's tough to gauge. I, you know, I do gardening.
And again, when does it get triggered?
Right.
And oftentimes, it's post-building permit, when they say, "Now let's power rake the whole thing and seed it."
Right.
And so then, is that?
Right.
It, it's a.
I know. Well, that's, that's what I say, that's why I bring it up as a, it's fine to have the bylaw, but it seems like we haven't been using the bylaw. So, you know, I know, for instance, the lots on Crooked Lane, it was clear on the septic points, the grading, it was very clear there was going to be more than an acre disturbed. You know, so what processes in the town to then somebody who's reviewing that part also is triggering, okay, this actually kicks it in the site plan.
Yeah, and I think those ones did actually, you know, they initially were sent for site plan review because I think it was just a high-profile one that, as you stated.
No, I was told that they would not go to site plan review, just because we don't do that.
They did, I don't know.
They did eventually, yes. But that's my concern is moving forward, what is, what is the mechanism? And does, there need to be something in the bylaws that spells out what the mechanism in, just so everybody's clear? So that we, you know, don't go into the future thinking, I don't know, is it an acre, is it not an acre, is it, you know, is it? I don't know, the Board of Health is going to tell us if it is, or the building inspector is going to tell us if the, you know. It's just my point, do we need a little more on that, just so that, because if we have bylaws, we should follow by them. Right, otherwise, we don't need them.
I agree, it's just, and not to get off track of your point, but I, I understand where you're coming from and the intent, but I just don't want to defeat what we're doing here with the rest of this because I think when we all started the site plan review changes, it was really because we didn't have a denial mechanism. And we really wanted to put something in place to do that. So I don't want to defeat what we have and then lose that. And then, you know, start the process. I would rather, you know, take everything you say under advisement, put it on as an amendment for the fall town meeting to say, "And we'll clean it up again," you know. And again, I'm not refuting anything you're saying.
Yep, no, no, I.
That's my, my initial input.
I understand the procedural, at this point, it is tough.
Yeah.
With two days till town meeting to.
Yep. Yeah.
Or one day, actually, well, Friday and Monday. Section 6.7.6.7, screening buffers and landscape requirements, I guess it's a question on that. It appears, by my reading, that without going back to all the other references, that we're now asking any applicant under site plan review to provide screening regardless of what it formally said? So, or currently, I should say, so currently, if there's, if there's an industrial property and there's a road separating it from residential, no screening is required? It appears to me that this is trying to.
What would be the determination on that?
Well, there is another section in the zoning bylaw that does require screening and buffering between certain residential uses and business uses.
Okay.
That there's another section in the zoning.
So whatever that section currently says about screening.
Yeah, and I think that's, that might be what I'm referring to here. "Notwithstanding whether or not the project is adjacent to a residential district, the plan shall comply with Sections 5.1", which, there's a whole section that refers to screening and, and buffering and what the requirements are.
Yeah.
So here, I think.
Oh, okay, sure.
So there's a whole section on screening.
On the screening, okay.
So I'm saying, well, you know. You know.
Okay, so that still says, "Other than along a street."
Right.
Okay, so it's in the other section. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Let me just check, I think that might have been also.
It's just saying, basically, the board can require additional screening if necessary.
Okay.
Okay.
And so for your first point, which I thought was good.
Dust and sound?
Yes, that, that section was removed. And it said, let me go back to that section. It said, so most of the things in here were, were put into some of the goals and, you know, the performance standards section, like, you know, disposal of wastes, stormwater runoff, you know, all these things are, are things that are specifically stated. There are certain sections in, in here about circulation and site access, right? You're, you're correct in that.
Did not say site, or I did see sound or.
Yeah, we did not kind of take, take something like that and put it into here. So what I was thinking while you were just talking about the other section was is that we could add an amendment if the board would like and, and add this to the purpose on of site plan review. And, or, I'm sorry, the purpose of performance standards on the 6.7.6. And number one is purpose. And add the wording, so it currently says, "The following performance standards have been adopted in order to control the size scale and impacts of the project listed in 6.7.3. Planning board shall ensure that such standards are met during the review of any planning board, site plan review application, or those that also require a special permit." So in between those two sentences, I would add, "The planning board shall consider the", and then we add the rest of this section, "The planning board shall consider the protection of adjacent uses against detrimental or offensive uses on the site by the provision of adequate surface water drainage," which is kind of redundant, but we can leave it in, you know, "buffers against light, sight, sound, dust, vibration, and preservation of light and air." So, so we could add that into the purpose section of the performance standards.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, the rest of the stuff is kind of filled in by more specific.
Yeah.
Those two seem to be, I mean, possible vibration, I mean.
Right, but that's, it's, it's fine to leave that in. And, you know, it's kind of a catch-all, you know, all those other things. I mean, I think there's enough meat in here that even if we didn't add that sentence, and it was a discussion about noise, that the board could require a noise impact report and an evaluation. Let's say there are giant air handling systems for a stadium. And they would do a noise evaluation and, you know, and try and modify it so that the background.
Yeah, and again, I don't want to cause redundancy if, for instance, last, in our last hearing, you were discussing whether or not a screening plant was allowed under the current zone for industrial use without an earth removal permit. Basically, my understanding from this, the meeting was, no earth removal permit was required. Well, if it was, those issues would be dealt, the dust, the noise, et cetera. So I just don't want to drop it here, if those uses are allowed under industrial use without some other trigger within town that oversees those uses.
Okay. Yep, so we can add do that as, so amendment one would be add open space. Amendment two would be, "The planning board shall consider", and then just put that in, so 6.7.1.1.
And then the only other question I'm not sure if I answered was the building over 35,000 cubic feet?
Oh, as far as requiring an architect as opposed to, yeah, I think, when the two were combined, that the requirement for an architect kind of, yeah, I just didn't keep that in, probably because, you know, we don't necessarily review building plans for construction. And that would go through the building inspector, the board's kind of looking at the plans for architectural consistency and design. So I think that's where the, and, and there wasn't a lot of discussion when we went through the, these two items. So I think that.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure why, if it'd been there before, if there was some reason that was your main to site plan review.
I don't, I don't, I didn't like.
I know, I know.
No, I have no idea. I mean, they, they probably just felt that anything large should have an architect's stamp on it at some point. I don't know whether there's a building code where it kicks in over 35,000 square feet.
We shouldn't really require a stamped plan as much as, and we still have in 6.7.4 and the new bylaw under number four, it's really what we should, it only requires building elevations.
Yep.
As for the, well, you know, you, on the site plan, you'd see the footprint of the building. But we shouldn't be required to review anything within the walls of the building.
Well, unless it's appropriately toward the use or potential use.
Yes, if it, if it affects the, the use of the site, and, and it's important to have an interior layout of the building, then.
And again, I'll just go back to the 156 Rhode Island Road. My understanding was the tractor trailer trucks would be using bays. Well, tractor trailer trucks need a certain turning radius, which is, I don't know, paved areas to get in and out of the building. The, the plans that were sent in didn't show where those bays were, so you could even review, is there enough?
Right, and we, we were aware of that because they, they were incomplete in their submittal.
Yeah.
And that was one of the requirements, was for them to come back with a plan. So that's, that always was and always will be a requirement of the site plan review processes, exterior elevations of the building. And then to show that, you know, it was a very scant plan, I acknowledge that, but I don't want to get off doing this tonight, but.
Yeah, no, I was just.
It is a requirement, I think. It, it is a requirement, I think it is captured within the new submittal requirements.
And the building inspector will deal with the building and-
Yeah, like I said, the only things we'd be really interested in is like, uh, the fire hookup for the fire department on the outside of the building, uh, anything like that that would be related to safety that's outside the building.
Usually with any sort of large-scale projects, we get professionally drawn, uh, building plans, even if they're not construction drawings, but they're, um, renderings by an architect of the buildings, a floor plan, we, we usually get, um-
Yeah, it's just the bylaws need to cover the unusual.
Mm, yes.
Uh, so to keep moving along here, what was the other? I had, uh, amending the performance standards to include six point seven point one point one from the previous site plan review bylaw. And then there was another suggested amendment that I just, I wanted to understand what that was before we agreed to it.
That was to add the, um, uh, open space committee to the list of, um, reviewed, reviewing boards under section six point seven point five point one.
And that's it?
Mm-hmm.
So at this point, if we motion to amend these two items and then to move to recommend approval of this amended-
With the amendments that we would-
Bylaw.
Which we would make on the floor at town meeting, because they've already been submitted to the clerk's office, so-
Right. So we still need to go through that motion, but-
Yeah, still need to make a motion.
For tonight, for belated suspenders, I'm going to make a motion.
Yeah, I'll have it all written up for you guys, you just have to read it.
Okay. So for starters, if there is no other discussion on site plan review, I make a motion to make an amendment to add open space to the review board list and move to amend performance standards to include six point seven point one point one from the previous site plan review bylaw. With those amendments, I move that the planning board recommend approval with those amendments to the new six point seven site plan review bylaw.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
Myself. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on. Uh, yeah, actually, I make a motion to close the hearing for site plan review. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, next item on the agenda is a public hearing, uh, this article, uh, I'd like to make a motion to open a public hearing, let me go back to maybe a ten top, to amend the zoning bylaw, section two point O definitions by adding additional definitions related to signs and deleting existing section six point six sign regulations and replacing it with new section six point six sign regulations, which would include subsection six point six point one, purpose six point six point two, permit requirements, six point six point three, general sign regulations, six point six point four exemptions, six point six point five temporary signs, six point six point six special permits, six point six point seven general sign prohibitions, six point six point eight removal of signs, six point six point nine non-conforming signs, six point six point ten administration, violations, and appeals. That said, all the planning board members have, uh, highlighted full text redline copy of, of existing and changed. Does anybody in the planning board have any discussion for the amendment to the site plan, I'm sorry, the sign bylaw?
I do.
Michelle?
Um, under six point six point three point seven, and I know this was something that I thought we had caught way back, um, doing the drafts, um, the way that this portion reads, uh, where it says, "The colors red, green, or yellow should not be used in a manner that might confuse the meaning or stop signs." I, I thought we had addressed that, so I really just want to make sure that we don't leave that poorly worded part in there.
Should it say like resemble, um, confuse or resemble, like a stop sign, stop light, or other traffic?
Yeah, that might, um-
I remember this, but, uh-
What if, what if it, or, it was just changed to of-
That might be mistaken for, I think we said.
The meaning of, oh, of stop signs, yeah. Could be just a typo, maybe it's, um-
Yeah.
Just a, give it a D R.
Do you see that, Mark?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, okay. Anything else, Michelle?
Um, just one, uh, the back here, six point six point seven point nine, and this must have come after it went to town council because, um, when I read this, I was like banners, pennants, ribbons, streamers, spinners, balloons, and strings of light. I don't want it to sound like we're trying to say, you know, outdoor dining areas can't have strings of light, or, you know, somebody can't put balloons outside of their establishment for a special occasion. Um, I think this was actually tied to something else that had to do with political signs and that portion had to be taken out. To me, the way that this reads now, it doesn't even apply to signs? Am I mistaken?
Can you say that number again?
Six point six point seven point nine.
Seven nine.
So, um, some communities do have this in here specifically because they don't want banners and pennants and, and, um, all the things that are listed here, you know, to be-
Wacky waving, flailing, cartoon man?
Yeah, that's exactly. They don't, they don't want those, those types of things, so, um, and, uh, so they, they do have that in here, they're, whether they have a wording on them or not for the business, they're, can be considered a sign, they're trying to, um, you know, gain attention. Um, you can see sometimes it's like the long and outdoor seating, it's kind of tasteful at a restaurant, they want to do that to provide some light at night for people to sit, also for people to see that they have outdoor seating.
Mm-hmm.
But a lot of times it's, it's, you know, used cars and they're flashing and there's stuff all over the place and it looks really obnoxious. So, um, a lot of communities just say, "No, you can't have it." And, um, I think that's where this comes from.
But that's, um, I mean, that's, a, a string of lights used to advertise is different than a string of lights in the back or on the side of a building to illuminate somebody's, um, dinner.
But doesn't, this doesn't really specify though, so that's why-
Well, it's under, it's, we're under signs, you know what I mean, uh-
Yeah, and it's totally prohibited though.
Right, general sign prohibited, because it's-
So, and, and I-
Down the corner of Stars where they have now all the food trucks, they have lights-
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Or even when we talk about the, the spinners, there's, you know, a homeowner that sells, you know, handmade things, I, I would hate to have, you know, his, his little livelihood taken away from him. Um, I mean, is this something that we could potentially strike out? Is it worth leaving in under special permit instead or? Does anyone else have an opinion?
If you did special permit, I'd have a lot of special permits.
Well, I, I think, I don't want to go to town meeting and have to make fifty amendments. I understand your concern, but I would rather the planning board send a letter to the zoning enforcement official to clarify the intent, and if at fall town meeting we want to strike it, we do it then.
Okay.
If that's okay. Norm?
Just a question on changes that are miring scope, do they, in other words, the, these were printed in the advertisement, I guess, of the articles, right? But an article can be modified until a motion is made on the floor, it's just an article and as long as the motion is within the scope of the article. So I guess the question is, minor changes like the adding open space or what have you, doesn't really change the scope of the article.
So it doesn't require an amendment?
That's my question, yeah, or that's my-
I've always done it as an amendment. If there's a, a technical, like a wording mis- mis- typo, right, or something that doesn't materially change the, the thing, then that can just be changed without even going to the floor, you know, um, it's a typo.
Yeah, I mean, certainly safer to do it this way, it just, I don't, I'm hearing what you're saying, it's like, oh, God, we're going to go to fifteen amendments, whereas I almost wonder if it can't just be handled in the final motion that you make, but-
On town meeting floor?
On town meeting floor, right, because the article just describes and, and gives the voters an opportunity to review beforehand what, you know, be requested. The actual wording of the motion is what, is what gets voted on.
I'm fine with that too then, if, if, like I say, I don't want to make multiple amendments and motions and more amendments just to get one bylaw changed, but if we can do something concise like that, I agree with Norm.
I don't, I don't pretend to have the answer to that, but-
Well, you were the town moderator, so I'm sure you're probably seeing it through.
I would have, but I'm not a moderator.
Well, I mean, and I feel like this happened, it's so late in the game, this is the first time we're talking about it since town council had a chance to look at it and, and made certain revisions.
And, and maybe that's a quick question, you know, because town council or whoever just, but, you know, again, just based on my experience, the motion, as long, as, as long as the motion stays within the scope of, you know, of, of the article as advertised.
Anything else, Michelle? Other items?
Oh, I just had a question, because I thought we were going to put something about lumens, but I didn't see that in this final version either.
No, we didn't discuss that.
The lumens were like a, um-
We decided not to go there?
Well, I, I think it, um, it, it was very difficult to judge and very subjective. I think it's like, um, almost requires like a study or, that's what I recall at least.
Okay.
I realize some, some, some signs that we're looking at right now are extremely bright, they're ridiculously bright, but-
Yeah.
Before you can, before we can, I, I think that, that's something for like the fall or next, next, um, you know what I mean? So that we don't make a, a poor judgment, you know?
Yeah, and, and we may find, you know, in any of these bylaws that we propose, that they're approved by town meeting, that once they're, um, you know, they're operational, people are using them, we're using them, building commissioner is, that, uh, there will be adjustments to make, but it's a significant improvement over, over what's there today, so, um, and that's typical of, of any zoning bylaw that any town has, is that they usually make adjustments as time goes on and the town develops.
Uh, so let me just ask the planning board, uh, just kind of take a quick little temperature check on that six point six point seven point nine that Michelle brought up about banners, pennants, ribbons, streamers, spinner balloons, is, what's everybody's thoughts on that? Should that be stricken or left in?
I believe it should be stricken.
Stricken.
Michelle?
Stricken.
Jack?
Yes.
Peter?
Spinners, balloons, and string, I, I'm just, they're trying to think, like, I certainly don't want to, um, i- i- is there anybody who's immediately going to be affected by this? I don't think so. You know what I mean?
Maybe if it stays?
Well, i- if, even if it stays, somebody would already, if they already had all this stuff, they would be, they wouldn't have to worry about this. This is just moving forward. Um, so if somebody already has those things and they're using them, they don't have to worry about this. Um, but moving forward, if they were to, uh, build something new or open something new, these are the things that would, uh, they wouldn't be able to use.
Well, just moving forward, if they didn't have one of those little banners that said, "Now hire it," or "Open," or whatever-
Right.
It kind of swings around in the wind.
Yeah.
They can't put one up after.
Correct, right.
It's not, it's not the-
Assuming everybody checks with the, the, uh, the zoning bylaw.
And that we went around and we actually journaled everybody that has one right now.
Correct, yeah. I, I, I don't have a problem if you would like to delete it, that's fine by me.
All right, so that's it. Is there any discussion on the sign bylaw from the public?
My own question I made is, am I reading correctly that, uh, signs associated with a current political issue or an election are exempt from any of the bylaws? Is that the way I read it?
Where do we read it?
I'm sorry, section six point six point four point two, temporary posters, placards under exemptions.
Yes.
Just so I understand.
Yes, yes, and, um, yes, th- those are exempt because of the free speech nature of political signs, so it's specifically in there as exempt. We had another section in there, um, that said they had to be taken down, and that is in the general bylaw, and after some discussion with the town attorney on that, um, we removed it because, just because it's associated with an election doesn't mean you still can't put something on your thing that says vote for so-and-so. I mean, you could, um, because that's speech.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, I guess there's been a case in the last few years on that, because many towns do require the removal-
Right.
Of, of, uh, political signs, or they limit the size and the-
Yes.
The posting, when you can put them out and so on for worse, and, um, so there's been a ca- recent case on that.
Okay, um, I make a motion to-
So, one thing, I, I just compared the, uh, the first thing that Michelle brought up about the word difference, it's the exact same in the current bylaw as in the proposed. We didn't change that. So I would say, look, let's just leave it for now when we-
Of or or?
We just leave, leave that section the way it's written, because that's the way it's written in the current bylaw. And I think, I think, um, you know, just do one amendment for the, um, we can add that to a long list, you know, when we, we go forward if we do some other stuff.
But it just doesn't make any sense.
I know.
Even though if the current bylaw states it, the current bylaw obviously as well-
Colors red, green, and yellow should not be used in a manner that might confuse the meaning or stop lights.
Just nothing changing or to of.
Okay, we can change it, we can add that too, that's fine. Word of in section-
So-
Six.
Make a motion to recommend approval of the sign bylaw with the amendment to replace or with of in six point six point three seven and strike six point six point seven point nine from it.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I make, uh, I'm sorry, I move to close the public hearing for the amendment to the sign bylaw.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to open the public hearing to amend the zoning bylaw, adding a new section seven point ten, open space residential development, which would allow by special permit the approval of a subdivision plan that allows the reduction of lot size provided, the same number of lots are proposed and the remaining land is set aside as open space. The same number of lots are proposed and the remaining land is set aside as open space. Included would be the following subsections, 7.10.1, purpose, 7.10.2, special permit requirements, 7.10.3, pre-application meeting, 7.10.4, dimensional and design requirements, 7.10.5, dedicated open space, 7.10.6, ownership of dedicated open space, 7.10.7, preliminary subdivision and OSRD concept plan, application process, 7.10.8, special permit application and filings, 7.10.9, special permit decisions, 7.10.10, approval criteria, 7.10.11, revisions to approved special permits. So I have a motion to open the public hearing. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hearing is open. Any discussion from the planning board members on the open space residential development bylaw proposal? And from the public, please state your name.
Nancy Yates, 19 Twin Oaks Road. I am on the conservation commission, but I'm not here representing the conservation commission. I'm on it, so I'm concerned about the references to it in this. I'm also concerned about the amount of people in the room that's withholding zoning bylaw. And from past experience in the town of Lakeville, I would think it needs a lot more. I mean, I didn't see it. We don't have, let's start with some basic questions. Town council, did this go by town council?
Yes.
Okay. What other examples did you look at? To me, it looks like this was fashioned after the town of Foxborough, which is not at all like Lakeville. We have outstanding characteristics and things to protect. So what other examples did you look at?
I pulled up, I don't have my folder with me, but Littleborough, plenty of, a couple towns south of us. I mean, I've looked at some medium-sized communities, like you said, Foxborough, which is only a few thousand people greater than Lakeville. It has an OSRD bylaw that has worked very well. I was there for 10 years, we probably did one a year. They have a lot more residential development occurring there than you do here at this point. Plymouth has a very good bylaw. I looked at that model bylaw that, you know, is okay, you know, it is, and it had a few things. And what I did was I pulled paragraphs and little sections and reworded things from some of these other bylaws. Nothing was really incorporated in its entirety. Most things were reworded in some fashion for clarity and, basically, this is an entirely new creation of a bylaw, so, that I tried to craft to work well here in Lakeville.
How about comments from other boards? I know it just went on our agenda, you know, Mark, it just went on our agenda, but we really didn't come up with or write anything in response to all of this, and I feel like I'm bringing this up at the last minute, but the hearing is like, like Norman said, it's what? A few days before town meeting. And I thought I was gonna write something up, but I'm like, even if I write it up, what difference is it gonna make? You're not gonna be able to make a lot of the changes that I'm thinking about or Concom might think about or the highway department might think about. I mean, you do mention about parks in here and you do mention about Concom having in charge of the land. There's nothing about Article 97 in here. I have, we had a meeting yesterday for the grant that I'm working on, which is another concern of mine. Some of the wording in this could really help with the grant we're working on right now. There's a lot of money available and it's MVP grant, which is municipal flooding. Changing just some of these words are some of the things that are being recommended in the grant and just how it's said. Reduction of energy consumption, greenhouse gas emissions, and mitigation of the effects of climate change, just by putting some of these in your purpose and intent, actually, I would like it to say purpose and intent. Some of that going in here, we can use going forward to get money to correct some of the stuff we're trying to correct. The residents of Long Pond got flooded out in 2010. And we're working on a grant right now, municipal vulnerability, to try to get money to change some of those things, to replace the undersized culvert under the TMRAC, to open up the Damasket River. Just by how we word this, we can use this towards getting more money by saying, look, we did what you asked us to do with this open space development, but it really needs to say some of this stuff we needed to stay in there, stay in there. And I'd like time to get recommendations from different boards, you know, even about maintenance standards from the highway department and what they would have to do if we did take on some of this open space. Nobody will, could ever say that I'm against open space, because I am not, and there's nobody would ever say that. But I'm also against protecting our water and our residents and want to make sure everybody has time to comment on this before going to town meeting. And I'm not about to be wanting to stand up on town meeting floor and go through a lot of these things.
Or other?
Pardon?
Or other?
Where are what?
All the people to comment.
Right. Maybe we need to make a bigger announcement.
What do you mean right? It was posted, we've talked about it several, we've been talking about it for three months.
But it never came to Concom, and I never even knew that anybody requested the boards for comment, because we didn't do anything writing, because it was never on our agenda. So how was the chairman like notified, was he asked for comment?
I met with Bob and I reviewed the entire document with Bob, and he received a copy of it at the time, and...
And it never went on our agenda until I stuck up and asked to put it on the agenda.
I don't set the agenda.
No, I know you don't. I know. And it's so, like I say, it's not your fault, it's not my fault, it somehow slipped through the cracks. So who else was asked, was the highway department asked to comment?
Yes, I talked to...
Did you get any written comments?
No, I don't think I, I talked to him. We have staff meetings, and this has been mentioned multiple times at staff meetings as far as the things that I'm working on. And the staff meetings include all the department heads, so, including Bob, including Frank.
Board of Selectmen's aware of it.
Uh, what?
Board of Selectmen's aware of it.
Board of Selectmen is aware of it. I presented it to them several times. That was...
Board of Health, because of the septic issues, I think that was discussed.
Yep, I've met with Ed several times in trying to look at the wording. We've discussed coming back and increasing the lot size and that type of thing, so.
Seems like a comedy of errors, maybe, that it never got put on the Concom agenda until I asked for it, and that was just last Tuesday, and we did, I asked a lot of these in questions, but we never came up with anything to, I said I was coming to the meeting tonight, but we never got together and did anything in writing or really discussed some of the things that, like, I think need to happen, like the highway, I, there's no...
I don't understand, what, you keep saying the highway department, so what would they do? Because we're talking about a subdivision, whether it be big or small.
Right.
So we're giving an option for it to be small.
Yep.
And that would go through the subdivision control process, and whichever one a developer would choose, it would go through the highway department for comment, if a development came in front of the planning board.
Right. Well, I'm just saying, where they asked about maintenance standards, we're talking about taking different pieces of property around town. Would you need to know something from them every time?
At every subdivision, we have to deal with that.
Okay.
Every time. And it would be based on the design that the engineer put forward, based on the swift, you know, for the stormwater.
But that's used about stormwater and stuff, not about if you're, have like a...
But we're gonna have, it's the road standards that we have in our bylaw would still be adhered to.
But the property, I'm talking about the property that's gonna be for open space, that's probably gonna have to be maintained by someone, and there, it was taken out or not even in here at all about the homeowners associations as being an option. I'm not saying that's a perfect option, I'm not saying any of them are perfect options, but it's not...
And we actually, we have discussed putting that back in.
Yeah.
That might be an amendment, because it seems like conservation just doesn't want to have a conservation restriction, so.
Yeah, I mean, we've discussed, I mean, my past experience with the open space that goes along with these residential developments is that the people who live there are vested in these properties. It's right next to their houses. They walk their dogs in there, they walk through to cut through to a neighbor's house. Some pieces are then attached to other conservation lands. And, and so the neighbors, you know, they make trails and they, so they get out to the rest of the conservation land for hikes and stuff. They have a vested interest. So most, these properties aren't like abused and, you know, dump sites. I mean, people live there. And so this isn't something that requires a high level of maintenance. I mean, the neighbors will pick up the trash if someone walks through and drops some cups and things. I mean, this isn't, for the most part, isolated pieces way out in the woods that we're acquiring that we need to have, you know, figure out monitoring programs and that type of thing.
I don't think we know that. We might have isolated pieces that are out in the woods. And when you talk about opening the land to the public, you're looking at the person who's watching the public land that gets totally, I never even believed in the beginning about the APC or Betty's Neck. Betty's Neck is pretty good, but once you open land to the public, you can't control what they leave behind, that they don't necessarily pack it in and pack it out. It's quite something. That's why I was concerned about conservation watching it, but I don't think, and I personally, not speaking for Concom, but not interested in watching different pieces of land all over town and being responsible that, what happens to it. We can't take care of what we have.
Is part of your question on the highway department downy for the open space use, but if it is the option to make it a park, right? It's the highway department maintains our parks, as far as I understand, it's part of mowing them and keeping them up, so I think what you're talking about is the in-use of that open space.
And obviously, when a development would come to us with this proposal, that's when we would circulate the plans and say, this is the proposed development with this parameters, open space. Concom, do you want to vote on this? What do you want? You make a recommendation. Board of Selectmen, do you handle the parks, the adoption, if that's the way? And if nobody's interested, then maybe we re-implement the homeowners association and we put it back on the developer to, you know, start a homeowners association, and they manage and maintain it.
So it would be the planning board that could decide, if the developer said, you know, we'd really like to make a park here, et cetera, then it still is up to the planning board to decide whether or not that would be allowed?
That's, that's correct. In the current bylaw, the board can, if this is a really large subdivision, I mean, a park may be desirable, or a playground, or just a field that kids can run around on.
It may be desirable, but the developer, my question is, if it's not desirable by the parks department to suddenly get a new park to staff up for it to maintain?
Yes, well, that would be part of the typical review process.
So then that recommendation would come back to us, I would assume, from the Board of Selectmen and/or the highway department to say, and then we would say, if you want the park there, you start a homeowners association and you clean your park. You put out a trash barrel and you take the trash out of it.
So you have put the homeowners association back in?
I would make a motion to put that back in, if you don't mind doing that, Mark. I know a previous member of the board was very against that for concerns that large open spaces would, through good lawyers and clever developers, be able to have that homeowners association dissolved and then develop that land as well.
Yes.
But then you also need to, oh, sorry.
And I, I, you know, I feel like right now the planning board that's here would understand the intent, and so if a plan came in front of us and the homeowners association component became viable, I think this board's intent would be to make sure that that land was divided up so that it wasn't developable. It was, you know, maybe spread out around the development without the ability to put more roads and more house lots in.
But then, I mean, the intent of this is to preserve open space. And we want large open, we don't want little tiny pieces of open space. We want those large open, I mean, so, but I think when it comes to, it's not necessarily the question of ownership, as it is, certainly I think, there's no way you should allow the open space without two parties having title to it, through easement. You know, one owner, one through easement, you know, just so there's...
A fight?
Yeah. Just like Betty's Neck, the town owns it, DCR owns the conservation restriction of it.
And it's protected under Article 97.
Right. But as far as the maintenance, I think that's where a homeowners association could be put on, you know, for maintenance. Now, again, same problem exists, you know, and I've dealt with issues in condo associations that 30 years later, no one remembers even the original owners, even knew that it existed.
Yep.
So, you know, though that is, you know, that is the downside, but, you know, I'm just wondering, is there, a developer, you know, can they put some money aside for perpetuity for maintenance, you know? But that's getting into more than what...
Yeah. And again, we don't know all those answers until a developer comes in front of us and says, I have parcel A, I'd like to make parcel A and B, and this be this open space. And until we get to that point and we say, hey, council, you know, here's where we're at with this, how can we get that funded so that it stays in perpetuity? We would need legal guidance to make sure that that does happen. Our intent is very much so to keep that open space and never be developed. And we really felt like the conservation restriction was the best way to ensure that. I understand, from a legal standpoint, it is, because it takes an act of Congress.
Right, conservation restriction is different from conservation being in charge of it.
Right. Yeah, it just holds it...
But also, if you're gonna put that...
But yeah, so, just to stay on that point for a moment, if we wanted to put a conservation restriction on it, and the Lakeville Conservation Commission hold that, but the homeowners association pay for the maintenance, is that an option with Concom? And I know you don't speak for them, but it seems like you're very much against the conservation restriction if Lakeville Conservation Commission has to hold it.
Because I don't think we'll follow through and watch it. I really don't. We don't have, I don't feel like anybody on the board would take it on. I've already taken on enough to do it, and we only have a part-time agent, and I don't think we need to, if we're gonna hire somebody like a land protection person that knew about it...
Well, I think, again, I mean, I don't wanna...
Right, I just, let me make my one last point here. Well, maybe it's not last, but my other point is, if you're gonna do the homeowners association thing, I don't think your ownership of dedicated open space is strong enough. A couple of the other bylaws that I looked at call out, not, and maybe Norman can help with this, but it's, shall permanently protected pursuant to Article 97, but then it also refers to general law, chapter 184.
I don't have a memory of it.
Okay, anyway, about restrictive covenant. I mean, I think you need to call out these laws in here to hold the homeowners association to it, because Article 97 land can only be changed from that open space by act of the legislature, right?
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds of the legislature. So I think you need stronger language under the dedicated open space if you're gonna put the homeowners association for any of it, really, because, like Betty's Neck is under Article 97, so you, that is really hard to be broken.
I'm sorry, Nancy, what was the other law that you...
So there's several references to, agricultural one would be, say, it's a farm land... Um, so there's several references to, agricultural one would be, say, it's a farm land, they're going to keep that open space, farmland, right? Um, so that's chapter 184, section 31 through 33. Uh, the nonprofit organization holding it, which would be like the Wildlands Trust, that's section 31 through 33 also. But then, um, if that's read, subject to a restrictive covenant in perpetuity under general law, chapter 184, sections 26 through 30. Just seems a little bit stronger than any of the language that's in here right now.
Do you have any thoughts on this, Mark?
Um, I mean, I think that requires a little more work than what we, to modify than what we have here. So, I mean, I would recommend that we move this forward in that if, um, that we don't just say we're not going to do this, but then that we put this on the agenda to work through some amendments to submit for the fall so that we can amend it. I think it's, it's.
Because I love this.
I, I support that fully, Nancy. You know, I'm not.
Okay, all right.
So, so I think it's, it's important to move this forward at town meeting, but I mean, I think,
But we really want to get it right.
I mean, we had these kind of discussions before and then we kind of said, well, you know, there was concerns about associations and so on and so forth, and let's just make it simple for the first time through. And so that was, that was the, to address some, some concerns. So that's why it is the way it is. So now that you brought this issue forward, I think it's a good thing that.
Yeah, we don't disagree with protecting.
Yeah, we can work, we can work together to put some language and then bring it to the board.
I would have jumped in sooner, but I've been a little preoccupied with the non-sol, or I would have been here sooner.
The, the only concern with moving forward is if it's adopted at town meeting, then in between town meeting and fall town meeting or whenever any amendments are adopted, someone could come in and get on the book under the current, you know.
But it's still, it's still.
Unlikely maybe, but.
It's a special permit too. It's not a by right use, so we would have the ability, I think, to control that.
That was my other question too, is why you didn't do by right? Because that seems to be the way people are going now, by right. And I don't even understand why.
Because what if we didn't like it? We just like the option of denial if we didn't like it.
I think that's.
I mean, uh, uh, communities are going to the by right because the state is pushing that. And in certain grant applications, you get extra points if it's by right as opposed to by special permit. You know, the state, uh, there's a big push for to increase housing stock because of the housing shortage, whether it's through the META community program or incentives to cities and towns to do other zoning that is, uh, housing friendly. So that's one way of making it a little more permissive is to make it by right. And so I, again, we thought the first time through, let's make it by special permit. Let's see how it works, how often it's used. And, um, I mean, I've been here six months and we haven't had a subdivision filed, so, um.
We probably had three in the past three or four years and a couple of them were like two, two or three lot subdivisions. Everything's been pretty small. And I'm not saying it won't happen, but, uh, I, our intent is certainly to get this right. And I know, I think we'd be more than willing to start the conversation right away.
Okay.
Uh, but again, we'd like to be able to recruit at town meeting. It is through special permit, so it's not a by right use where somebody can come in and do something that we don't like. You know, we have the right to deny it and we could stave it off until we get that language right or just not have it developed.
Mr. Chair, if I may, um, so just, just listening to Nancy and, I mean, if there's language that we can add that would allow us to get some more grant money, I think that'd be great. And just like Norm said, um, if something were to come in between now and fall town meeting, it, the thing that's been nagging in my mind is, you know, what if there's a portion of, of a property that currently is a large portion, large property, but a large portion of it is currently undevelopable? But then this would then allow it to be developed in a certain area. And therefore, you know, it's actually now allowing development that maybe wouldn't have gone forward and without this.
No, no, no. That's, that's wrong because.
Because you have to be able to build the whole piece to prove lot coverage, the lots at our current seventy thousand square foot rate before they even get the, the leniency of reduced lots, reduced, reduced roads.
Yeah, they have to prove, they have to prove the developability of the, of the preliminary plan. The entire preliminary plan, they have to be able to show that they can build that. Let's say it's a hundred acres, like you say, a large parcel. They're going to show that they can build those fifty conventional house lots on that hundred acres. So they're going to be able to prove the soils. They have to map the wetlands. They have to do the things that can prove that they could do a hundred, uh, fifty house lots on that hundred acres. Along with that submittal, they will submit the concept plan for the open space development. And then the board can kind of tweak the overall design of that. And then if both get approved, they, like, so they can prove that they can do fifty conventional and the board likes and approves the concept plan, then he can move forward with doing all the engineering, the expensive part, with all the engineering and the final design for the concept plan and submit that as a special permit and definitive subdivision at the same time. And so then the board reviews that as the final thing. But they can't get to that stage if they don't prove that they can do, uh, build that preliminary plan on that hundred acres. So the board can deny it based on the preliminary plan, or you don't like the concept plan and the developer doesn't want to change it. And you can say, this isn't really benefiting the town of Lakeville and we deny it. And so they have to go back to a conventional plan.
Right. My, my only caveat to that would be somewhat to your point, which you're absolutely right. It has, it has to support that same number of lots under conventional rules. However, if there is a cost involved, so maybe currently you own that a hundred acres, there's seventy acres with, you know, some wetland between the frontages. And then you could squeeze that number of reduced lots on the front part and not have to have the cost associated with crossing the wetlands to access your upland behind. Now that's a piece of property that maybe makes more sense to develop because you, you.
We've reduced the length of roads, the hurdles are.
Right. But that's a trade-off for getting the open space. So, you know, in, in, in that case, if all the development was up front versus crossing the wetlands and putting the extra thirty houses in the back uplands, we get thirty acres of back uplands as open space. So, you know, that's the trade-off. You got to give the developer a little bit.
That's how you get the open space, is to create this negotiation to, to achieve good for both parties.
Yep. Yep. It has to be in the sentence.
And if we're taking a risk by, like, table on until we fix some of the language for our fall town meeting, I would say right now is a better time to take the risk than not because who's buying building materials right now?
Right. Great point.
I have a couple of questions, hopefully are more minor than. Under seven point ten point four dimensional design requirement, number two, um, talks about the lots minimum size thirty thousand square feet to use upland, general location of septic systems and wells shall be shown on plans to ensure proper, et cetera. It's not clear to me, can you use the open space portion for septic and wells?
Well, they have to be able to prove that the open space portion could support septic systems. In other words, they have to come in with some soil mapping. Any comments from the board of health saying, yes, that thirty acres in the back that they want to give to us, um, can support septic systems? That is not a, a thirty acre, not a ledge.
No, no, I understand. I'm asking, can they put them on that open space? So, so you've proven.
Like drainage.
Oh, yeah, no, no, no.
Less than two minute per grade sand on the open space. And since they have small lots and they're trying to configure a well, they'd like to put the septic system within the open space. Allowed or not allowed?
Not allowed.
Okay. Uh, it just wasn't clear in here?
Yeah, no, not allowed.
That that wasn't allowed? And I think some other community do allow that.
They might allow some sort of comment, things, yes.
Uh, under four of the same section, the asterix on the frontage and at the bottom, the board may allow twenty percent of the lots to have a frontage reduced to fifty feet. That seems a bit.
Well, we looked, I, I just showed the board a variety of plans, open space plans that I worked on before.
The, the frontage that Mark had was much lower than a hundred feet on all of them.
Yeah, I had like seven.
So our intent was, we wanted to kind of mirror half of what Lakeville is currently. So we chose a hundred feet, which is a little more than half. But with this, the incentives of development, if you had a road with bends on it, maybe on those outside corners, you could still create sort of that front yard circle type situation, but with small frontage. So that the, the lots would pie outward on outside corners and only allowing twenty percent figuring. They couldn't do it everywhere and they would be incentivized to just utilize some of those corner lots.
Then elsewhere I had seen where we talked about the rest of the lot can't be less than what I assume to be the hundred foot frontage. Is that still the case if you do have fifty foot frontage that, you know? I, I believe there was a line and I saw it earlier today.
It's right here, um, the width of each. So the width of each lot shall not be reduced to less than the required frontage from the street to the building site. So that fifty foot can go to twenty five. It can be fifty feet up to where the building site is and then it widens out. So for example, there was a couple of deep lots that I showed on the plans that I showed the board that had a fifty foot going in and then widened out behind the other houses so that they could put a house in the back.
So the required frontage refers to the hundred feet, not a fifty foot weight or twenty percent of.
Well, it could, it could be either. It could, it could be either.
How wide is the house?
Fifty foot lot or it could be the hundred foot lot, but it's, but it can't go, can't go in. Like the hundred feet can't go in the fifty. If you, that's your hundred foot lot. It has to stay a hundred feet going back to the buildables, to the building site.
Otherwise, its side yard is twenty feet, so it would have to be ten foot wide. Okay.
Right. You'd need, it'd be a shed.
Well, I think there's a house of bosses sold for a million dollars last year.
It did.
Probably then, that was ten feet wide, right? Uh, hopefully we don't have that issue. Under the seven ten point five dedicated open space, number one, a minimum of fifty percent of the upland area of the parcel shall become dedicated. It's just not clear to me when you say parcel and, and maybe, I'm, I'm assuming parcel means the original parcel.
Yes.
Not the lot.
No, not, that's why it's, you, we didn't say lot, because a lot of the other things talk about lots.
Good. I mean, I'm, I tried to do this twenty plus years ago.
I know. I went to a lot of stuff myself twenty, fifty years ago.
Fortunately, the, the name of this type of zoning has evolved into being a positive open space rather than cluster zoning, as we used to call it, right? Uh, but I, 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 you know, I just think it's, it's good for the town. I do, I think that concept, you know, despite the little nuances we need to work out because if done right, it really can, and just using agriculture as an example, you know, if we have land that can, you know, support five house lots under, you know, under conventional rules, but we could put five house lots and then maintain, you know, several acres of, of agriculture. I mean, it's just be fantastic from my standpoint.
Nancy?
I have to come up with forty percent coverage. I think I missed that when I went on my first round of round because we have twenty-five percent coverage now.
Because the lots are so small, we still figured a house and a driveway and a patio were set amount. So when we're reducing the, the outside space of the lot, we're still giving them basically a tw- twenty-five hundred square foot home, a driveway and some patio coverage. So your, your, your forty percent of a thirty thousand square foot lot is only fourteen thousand square feet. Whereas on a seventy thousand square foot lot where you're allowed twenty-five percent, I'd have to do the math, but you're upwards of eighteen, nineteen thousand square feet of coverage.
Okay, so how did the board of health feel like, um, about a septic and a well on a, with, these houses are going to be closer together, so now you, it's really point six eight of an acre. And how did the board of health feel about a septic and well on those lots? Especially if they're like, they love it?
Well, that, obviously it has to be a proof plan.
As, as long as during the definitive, during the definitive subdivision process, they review where the location of the wells are and the location of the septics to ensure that the proper separation. And so that, um.
I'm talking about each other, not necessarily the lots.
Oh, yeah, no, there's plenty of them. There's only a hundred foot separation requirement. Um, so there's.
I thought it was a hundred and fifty for a well from a septic, not only a hundred, okay.
And then overall, just as far as like lot to lot to lot, um, you know, again.
Be creative.
Yeah, it's, 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 um, it's within, um, you know, during the review process to make sure that, uh, and generally what you find is, you know, the developer will build, you know, all the houses with the septics in the back or in the fronts and the wells in the back. And they'll all be very similar, um, in, in the layouts. You know, developer doesn't want to have a lawsuit because, you know, someone's drinking stinky water, so, you know.
Any other public discussion? All right. Uh, make a motion to close the hearing and to recommend approval of section seven point ten, open space residential development. Have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
So I'm confused. I thought you said we were going to wait for the fall town meeting.
To amend it.
To amend it. And we would work with you now to get those amendments going.
Oh, all right. Then I am confused.
That's what we.
It is what.
All right. So we're going to have to tweak it and go back again. All right. So it protects us in the meantime if some developer decides it's got enough money to do a subdivision, okay?
Right.
All right.
Okay, so I'm sorry about this. We have one more public hearing. Uh, I make a motion to open the public hearing to amend the zoning bylaw, section seven point four point six, specific uses by special permit, auto or boat sales, rentals or service by deleting industrial district and replacing it with business district. Uh, this is a housekeeping issue. I'm sorry.
For a second.
I have a motion in a second to open the hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, Mark, this is a housekeeping issue.
That's correct. It's already been changed in the use chart, um, but it was not changed in, in the section for special permits, a lot of the special permit uses, um, may some have extra requirements. Um, some just restate the use chart requirement, which is what this did. It's kind of redundant, but it wasn't changed, so we're just changing it.
Yep. Uh, so that said, where this is housekeeping issue, I make a motion to close the hearing and recommend approval of the seven point four special permits amendment. I have a motion in a second, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda, site plan review for Two Beverage Street. This has been a request to continue, uh, by the applicant. So that said, that was for May twenty-sixth, Mark, that they want to come back?
Yes.
Uh, make a motion to continue the site plan review of Two Beverage Street until May twenty-sixth at seven P M. Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, we have site plan review for one fifty-six Rhode Island Road, which has also been requested to continue. Um, I make a motion to also continue one fifty-six Rhode Island Road site plan review until May twenty-sixth as well.
That's correct.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Uh, site plan. Uh, site plan for three-ten Kenneth Wells, sorry for the delay. If you guys could, I know you kind of know the deal, but just step up and, uh, if you could identify yourselves into the mic when you speak.
Who's that continue?
Yeah, no, it's, it's working. Let me just get rid of the phone. See, my name is Terrence Russell. I, uh, I'm here to represent, uh, Juicy. And I'm an architect with Epstein in Chicago on that six-hundred West Fulton Street.
Hi, I'm Gwen Cortez. I'm a civil engineer with Epstein. I am technically representing Vega, the landlord. Definitely ten times, well, should be.
So our purpose tonight is to really just provide the board with an update on what we've been doing since last March. And, uh, since last March, uh, Vega Strategic, the new building owner, hired, uh, Epstein to, uh, kind of look at the entire site. Previously, we were only working on the Juicy portion of the site. So they hired us, and there were a number of review comments, uh, one specifically regarding wetland delineation. Um, there were comments about coverage, materials, uh, how much parking the overall site would need. So, um, they hired us to look at all of that. So since then, we hired a civil engineer who completed the survey work for us, finding the grades. Uh, we actually found the original engineer who did the, the first wetland delineation, and he was out on the site, and Gwen will review his findings with you tonight. Um, and we have an idea of, uh, what we need to do to accommodate parking for northeast alternatives. They're the other tenant in the building with Juicy. They also grow, uh, medical cannabis as well. So, uh, we have a site plan to, a concept site plan to review with you tonight. And, uh, Gwen can go through all the technical details of that.
Sure, um, so just to start, um, one issue that came up when we went in. This, this area in green, that was the, the Juicy portion that we had originally talked about with some modifications to pick up some of those comments we'd received before. Um, we, like I said, like Terrence said, this is a concept design, this is our, our progress drawing. But, um, for the wetland issue, um, we did hire the wetland consultant who had done the previous delineation. And he went out on site, and he, he reported that while the wetland looks the same, and for our design purposes, we can start working on things, assuming the same boundaries to get things going. Um, some of the flags are missing, and it needs to be redelineated. Um, so he's gonna redo that for us, um, and we'll get those results prior to resubmitting. Um, but for now, we're proceeding with our, our concept design with the assumption that the wetland is in the same place. Um, and will not need to be addressed, um, any changes there. Um, so this plan basically shows, I've got four different colors on here because there's basically four different issues we're trying to address. Um, there's the original thing we started with, which was the lack of parking, um, with the Juicy tenant um, in green down on the southeast corner. Um, there's the compressed natural gas, um, generator pad that was created, um, and built up here in yellow, um, but was not permitted. And so we are coming back in with that to get it truly permitted. Um, and we're gathering information on that and, um, some of the equipment, the, the plans that were created before so that we can, um, submit that for permit. Um, another issue is that the fire lane in red is not in very good condition right now. Um, and we are proposing paving it with recycled asphalt and, um, making sure, kind of maintaining some of the landscaping that's overgrown on there to make sure it, it meets at a minimum eleven-foot width. Um, and, um, just giving it a little bit more defined routing back there. It's kind of just a, a dirt path. Um, and then the final issue is the area in blue on the west end. Um, that's the parking, there's a severe lack of parking for the Northeast Alternatives client as well. Um, so we've been trying to explore how we can build out their parking to meet their employee shift count needs. Um, I've got some tables down on the bottom here talking about, um, how many spaces we have existing and how many we are proposing. I know they're small right here, but we can start. Um, the Juicy side hasn't changed a lot, but we are proposing creating, um, twenty more spaces total um, and just kind of reconfiguring this to be more efficient, um, just make a little more sense and be more usable. Um, the Northeast Alternative side, we are talking about creating sixty new spaces and reconfiguring the rest. Um, also, they didn't have any ADA spaces, so we're looking at finding a logical place for those. Um, and then that's a total of seventy-nine regular spaces and five ADA spaces being created on the total site to try and address the ongoing parking issues. Um, do you guys have any initial questions?
Yeah.
Lot coverage, please.
Yes, um, the coverage, and that's gonna be an issue because there's wetland covering this whole back area of the site. So this plan, as shown, is a seventy-two-point-four percent coverage, or seventy-two-point-six percent proposed coverage. Um, I believe when we previously discussed this, the maximum allowable coverage was seventy percent. Um, so right now, we're.
Not to cut you off, but is there a mechanism through the zoning board of appeals for them to seek a variance for lot coverage? Or is that just, it's not allowed over seventy, period?
You can always request a variance for anything from the, um, site, from the zoning bylaws. So, I mean, they would have to come in and make their arguments, uh, to the zoning board, you know, the, the, um, that, uh, the hardship here, you know, perhaps might be the fact that the building exists already and it was permitted with small parking lots and so on and so forth. I mean, there, there are arguments to be made, and there's probably multiple arguments to be made to, to support that. But they, to, to go over the seventy percent, they would have to, uh.
Zoning board appeals.
Yeah, go to the zoning board unless they can figure out how to kind of reconfigure and create some, some other greens.
I do want to say, I, I like what you have done on the Northeast Alternatives end of the building, that huge improvement from what's there. And I, initially, their approval was pretty scant, and I think that they were just kind of thinking small at the time, so that, that looks much improved.
Yeah, I did want to point out, just kind of on the ser- here's, this is the survey of that side of the building. Um, and you can kind of see the outline of where that new parking would go and what the impacts would be. Um, there's a lot of kind of brush in this area. I was out there this morning. A lot of it doesn't look like it's, it's great quality, but, um, and we're staying away from the wetland and the berm, kind of protecting that. Um, but there are a lot of trees in that area, and just wanted to bring that up in case that's gonna be an issue, um, of re, if someone's gonna want us to relocate all of those trees.
Well, the, the quality's not good. We did do a tree survey, so we know how big they are.
Lot of nice swamp maples.
Yes, at best. A couple white pines. They're actually kind of pretty.
So I, I'm familiar with the area, and I, I, I'm not opposed to what you're proposing there, and I don't think you need to go to. My, my opinion, and we, we could ask the rest of the board, but I don't think you have to go to great lengths to try to salvage the trees out of there.
Okay.
Okay.
We were hoping you'd say that, because one missing component I didn't bring up tonight is that, uh, once we have an okay on our direction to proceed, we will hire a local landscape architect uh, to design, uh, additional landscaping for these areas that we're, we're touching on right now.
Excellent.
Good.
Yeah, that's one of those, to really, to be at that seventy percent lot coverage. There, those two components are a nice landscape and a attractive building. So anything you can do to, you know, sprinkler system to keep the grass green on the street side of the building and, you know, new trees are fine, but plantings are excellent. That, that helps huge.
Okay, um, that's definitely.
Can you, uh, actually, that's the slide I'd like to see. Can you, uh, zoom in and at least show like a scale? When you say eleven feet for a fire exit, um, eleven feet being the corner, um, of the building?
This spot right, right here where there's this cooling tower?
Yeah.
That's eleven feet between the face of that cooling tower and the plant material. And there's a, a drop-off very short about, shortly after that.
Yeah.
Might have to pull the mirror in.
Yeah, or it might rip the, uh, the mirror off, you know? And that's as far as you can stretch that, but you can't be stretched, because.
It's wet there.
It's wet. That's, that's the problem, is if we expanded it, we'd be expanding into the wetland.
Have to do a replication somewhere else and.
Yeah.
And those cooling towers were there, um, from when, uh, from the original tenant, when it was first built?
Um.
Were those added?
I don't, I don't think we know the history of those.
Take a look at Google Earth, and, but, uh, yeah, I don't think.
They may sort of know these alternatives, but I, I don't really know.
Yeah.
So that, that's my question. Are they for the marijuana-growing operation? Or are those cooling towers for the refrigeration for, um, cold storage?
Cold storage solution.
Yeah, the ocean, the other one.
They may have been re-proposed.
Okay.
For the, the cannabis growing. However, they don't have a lot of controllability. That's what we're finding out on the Juicy side is that the, the plans that we just resubmitted to the building department uh, address all the issues they're having with the growing conditions in there, so the new units are very controllable for them. But we, we don't know anything really much about Northeast Alternatives operation.
Okay.
Peter, do you have anything else?
Well, just that, like, I'd like the fire chief to see this and to, and to have a simulation of a fire truck getting past there. Because just showing it doesn't do it.
Yeah, I have, I've run an auto turn past it. It's definitely tight, um.
If the right tires fall into the water, it's no good, you know, I mean.
Um, it's, yeah, it, it gets through, but it is definitely very tight, and some of those concrete pads that don't have equipment on them are, their trucks definitely going kind of over those corners.
Right.
Um.
So I've been out there with.
I believe the fire chief did take a look at this as well.
There are some vertical appearance concerns as well that we, we spotted this morning. Uh, there's some piping that goes from one of the tanks past the cooling tower. It's probably ten foot or so.
We said it was about ten feet up, and it went two foot out over the fire lane.
Yeah.
Anything else, Peter?
Could you go back to the, um, to the, to the gas storage tanks for a second? Uh, see the, uh, see the area that's, um, e- existing, I guess, that's, uh, in aggregate right there, um, where you're doing the new. So what is that exactly? In zone A, um, the, uh, the warehouse there where it's, I keep going to the left, sorry. Right there. So wh- when you transitioned from zone A into the fire lane?
Mm-hmm.
They, that was originally drawn with several parking spaces going, um, to gain parking spaces. They had put parking spots like vertically almost.
Oh, interesting.
Uh, well, I'd have to go back and look at some older drawings, but, so that's just a clear shot? They're gonna come around the, the side of the building and then right in?
There's no plans for parking here. These seven spaces, yeah, seven spaces, are not being used by Juicy, and they're not striped out there. I was told that they were there, and I put them on the drawing. So I think the, one of the other tenants has been parking a couple cars back here, but it's all up against this edge of pavement.
Okay, I just was curious where you showed the, the gray, not the gray change, but some material change. Uh, that's, that's, that's just a smooth transition, right?
Yeah, this is just like reinforced because of the loading docks here.
So those are loading docks with eighteen-wheelers at them?
Uh, yeah, they're mainly, I think they're mainly being used because they have compactors at them. That's what these items sitting here are.
Trash compactors and the random waste compactors.
All right, so there wouldn't be an eighteen-wheeler there obstructing the fire lane? There, there couldn't be?
There shouldn't be. We can confirm.
Because it looks like if you had room for three bays, an eighteen-wheeler would extend out and pass.
This would be the only one that would probably be an issue, but yes, I, I see the concern that if there was a truck sitting here, it could block that. We need to, we can definitely verify.
Yeah. Did you look and see if this actually works, a, a WB sixty-seven on this file?
I didn't try and back a WB sixty-seven into this.
So we did a WB sixty-seven on the North, Northeast Alternative side, and that will work. We have a way for a large truck to get in over there.
Okay.
But they have a little bit more reasonable area to deal with.
Right, I'm not even sure, probably could do it. But yes, if we did park a WB sixty-seven right here, it would probably be blocking the fire lane and make sure that too.
Yes.
Okay, um, we can confirm that.
I mean, I, I'm not trying to hop on the, the fire thing, but you see what's off to the right. It's kind of like the fire chief's like, we're assigned here, so. I'm just trying to be the double advocate for it.
Not something you want to be blocked from fire access, yeah.
Exactly. Although there's not much fire gonna happen. If anything happens, I think so.
Blast, it's a blast, right?
Nice.
Right.
Uh, now you, as you said, you have those other spots lined out on the plan. You said they're really not shown physically.
These four, these seven, yeah, when I was out on site this morning, they weren't striped. Um, I think they might have been at one point in time.
Uh, the Jersey barriers that show for that concrete pad where the natural gas trailers will go. Is that enough room with those spaces there to actually swing a truck to back in? Because I'm under the impression that there'll be more than one trailer in that corral.
Yes, they, they would want to have more than one trailer in the corral. Um, I'm trying to get more information on the size of the vehicle that's bringing the gas, and that's part of why is because I want to show the maneuvering there. I think those, that, this, those seven spaces may not be realistic in the end.
Right.
Um, especially if they're the, if they're gonna leave the, the trailer sitting there with the cab on it.
The building owner is also looking into the area as well.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to get more, more information on the original plans, um.
Okay.
To understand what's there right now.
Now, I have a question about this as well. Now, um, have you had to pull a permit for this?
They have.
With the gas generators?
My understanding is that it was built without a permit, um, and that's why they would like it to. The new building owner would like it to be permitted now.
Okay, so, because I wasn't, um, conversation with Cannabis Control Commission, and, um, they said that you would have to go back to them as well for a structure change. If you have to pull another permit, so just so you're aware, you do have to go through the.
They are already doing work inside the building, would that be?
There.
Well, I, this was specific to those gas generators.
Specifically to those, okay.
Okay, I think we, uh, we did supply Juicy with the latest site plan, correct? And, uh, and the latest building plan specifically for the CCC. We did, the architects did.
Including those gas generators?
They were, they were on the site when they were in the site. But we will also verify that because what we supplied.
Yeah, because it's, it didn't sound like they do anything about it.
So we give Juicy all of the information that we have and how they divide it up and, and, and submit it is, is their process. So we, we really need to verify that.
Yeah, well, I think Michelle's point is Gwen stated, um, that structure wasn't permitted. And so now, we just want to make sure that just because it is on a plan that Juicy's passing around, that they're not saying it was permitted until it is permitted. And that if they need to go back to the Cannabis Control Commission, we're, we're trying to close the loop, and it's not you folks' fault, but this is, I think, now like the fourth or fifth site plan review that we've seen on this property in three years.
Um. I know you mentioned it in our January meeting.
Yeah, and.
We didn't know it was a little bit of a furnace nest when we.
It, yeah, I, I'm not, we're not upset about it, it's just, we'd like to see all these things get caught.
Yes.
Now with what you're doing, and just to make sure that, you know, just everybody's on the same page and.
Well, the building owner is aware that it's not permitted, and part of our contract is to get it permitted with, with city.
And, and question, I mean, you have a large building. Have you put any consideration to some other type of power source?
Yes.
Because, you know, rather than the gas generators, you know, I think it would be, I mean, even the master in the law, you know, you're supposed to, you know, minimize, um, that sort of.
This is Cannabis Control.
So what, we're working right now with Middle Borough Power, and we'll have some, uh, exterior switch here. Um, that we already talked to, I believe, uh, his name is Nate Darlin.
Yeah.
Building. Um, and we're also working with a, a local electrical contractor, Stottleman Electric. He's a, he's a terrific guy. We know of working with him. Uh, so we're working. He's a he's a terrific guy, we know of working with him, uh so we're working on increasing the amount of power coming through the building.
But so anything solar or wind or anything more sustainable?
Solar would seem to be a viable option with the rooftop area, but.
Yeah, we have not, because these buildings do use an awful lot of power and I don't think you can get enough solar or wind. The the issue with solar in the north is that we have a lot of cloudy days. And even Chicago is not a great solar area because of the clouds. Southwest Arizona, it's really terrific. Uh you can generate a lot of power, but here it's a little more challenging just because of the climate.
Something else you just referenced, Nate, he had mentioned um in a conversation I had that the property maintenance company. Was trying to get a uh trailer. Like a site trailer permanently or temporarily or something on site with.
So they wanna, they just wanna put a temporary construction trailer for six months. Uh it would be located, if you move the site plan up just a little bit. And then zoom in to the street side in the middle of the building. Yep, and then to the. But the middle, middle part of the building.
I'm sorry.
Right, right there, okay, so there is a. See the square box just above the um. Yep, to the, keep going to the right. Little more. Okay, so that pad to the right where the hand is right now.
I see.
Is a pad where there's a set of doors to go into the building. Just to the right of that pad, there's an empty space there and that's where they would like to put the temporary construction trailer. For the for the uh manager.
And it's only temporary?
Only temporary for six months um is what they would like.
Is that Northeast Alternatives?
Uh that is to the property owner's property manager that they've hired. So not, not, not either of the two. Uh Jeff. Hall is his name. Yes. He's the on-site property manager who represents the owner of the property.
Speaking of alternate power, I mean, that is an area where we were talking about potentially having temporary roll-up generators.
Yeah, on on the pad, if we needed that.
It's not a better alternative.
But if you can point out where the switch gear.
Yeah, and this is the.
That's.
Our tentative location for the switch gear.
So um that's fine if the trailer for the property maintenance company is temporary. But I just wanna say it, you know, on the record, we just don't want it to become a permanent thing. It sounded like at one point it was proposed, like it would be more than a temporary thing.
No, I I expressed to Nate that I would explain it to you to the board. But I would um recommend that we only allow it for six months. You know, I think what they need to do as property owners is. Create a small, I I know the the rest of the building eventually is gonna be divided between the two tenants. That uh but they need to carve out a little space inside, an office. Some sort of space in there for the property owners. Um for whether it's.
For their maintenance people.
For 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 a property manager or even just uh someone who might come by. Because um you know uh. And because they really can't go into the two other facilities because they do have strict security protocols and stuff. So that's the whole purpose of having him have his own office space trailers. Uh because currently there is no place for him in the building. But I think uh that's something the owners should if they.
If it's permanent, it's law coverage. So it's that's, I guess, what I want to voice, just to make sure that it doesn't become permanent, cause then it puts you even beyond the. What, you know, I I, in my opinion, the seventy-two point six, if you went for, I would think that's reasonable to get some relief on that. But I just don't want it to be like it was in the past where every six months there's a new site plan and. So I I'm just mentioning it to to catch it if it is.
Through loud and clear and there was some frustration expressed and so that's why the new building owner is trying to get everything done at once and.
Yep, yeah, the effort clearly looks a lot better, so we we appreciate that. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
And they they have been working with the fire chief on this, I've been at a couple meetings. Uh since we had the last meeting, uh and they've been out and we toured the whole gas. Uh new um compressed natural gas facility. He was there with about half the department. They got a tour and an explanation and I think today they went up uh to discuss uh fire alarm. Box locations and other things, so so they are working cooperatively with the fire department. Which is one of the big concerns of this place.
Okay, um and Gwen, are you confident that the proposed parking, more so for Juicy than Northeast Alternatives? Will rectify them parking across the street?
We would love to have fit even more spaces on here um.
That's a leading question.
Yeah, I I think I would say I'm confident I've maxed out functional parkings on the site. Without impacting the wetlands, the storm uh issues. Or or the um you know, existing drainage and that. Without, the other option we would have would be there, we wanted to cover more of the lot and try and get better parking. Would be try and have more curb access.
Okay, with the spaces now in the green area compared to what's there today? With we have granted them, you guys, temporary parking. How is, how many spaces does that increase from what's currently there today with the temporary?
Trying to recall the temporary numbers off the top of my head, I will say the temporary ones counted on double parking.
Head to head?
Yeah, um and they were. They were smaller spaces as well, I think we only did eighteen foot spaces instead of the twenty feet over cars.
And it may just be that we were here on a day where the ships were smaller.
Yeah, they they have room today, but that's.
They did, but that doesn't mean they don't use it when we're not here.
Yeah, I I don't remember the number of the temporary spaces to compare. I think it's less because I think we added. I think we added less than, this is twenty new spaces, which I would have loved to get more. But um I think we added closer to like fifteen in the temporary and that was with. Double parking, I found about, right?
I I was thinking it was in the thirties, but I know we lost four spots when we had to remove that other curb cut that was shown originally. So we lost four spaces from the last go around. One of the other things that we're looking at as well is providing parking lot lighting out here. Uh I don't think there really isn't much lighting at all, so we will do a photometric study. And uh we have parking like poles and building on it.
Excellent. Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I would direct the question American to Gwen, is it, would be appropriate or beneficial to ask Northeast? If those cooling towers, are they using them, if they're not using them?
They are currently using them, yeah, that's. We asked the same thing, yeah.
I do have a question, if you go to the new park, yeah. Now, are they going to be having a new entrance for? Uh northeast, Northeast Alternatives, right?
Yeah, there's.
Back parking lot, are they creating a new entrance in the back for all their employees? On on this side of the building, in other words, like this becomes their main.
Their pedestrian entrance, we believe right now there's uh this, this is their main entrance, just based on the signage we have out there. They have an entrance over here as well um.
It's a new door that was cut into the brick, you can see where it's.
Yeah, that is also.
But it's a, it's a solid door, I think, with just a bell and a camera essentially, so. Uh we're not really familiar with their operation. Uh which makes it difficult to try and place the handicap parking, cause they should always go near the accessible entrance. And we've told them that, so.
If they had a, if they had an entrance in that, in that far back left-hand corner, I'd say that that's, that's those ADA spots are in a, not a bad spot. But right now, you're almost making them as far away as possible.
Right, well, that's, there is a door here. These, these, this part of the building is all, these are docks, so this is all four foot up, so this main entrance is not accessible. So there is a door back here, so I was hoping that maybe we could make this into an accessible door because it's one of the few doors that's at grade.
But but as they expand into that space and take over the entire back of the building. I mean, I don't know, I have not been inside either end, so I don't know how they're set up. But I mean, are they looking at, or do you not even know, redesigning and relaying out and creating a main entrance? At this end of the building for the staff who works there, I mean.
I mean.
Doesn't have to be some jet beautiful, you know, entrance like you would for a a a lot of public coming in and out, but.
Uh I think that's our next discussion, we did get a set of plans that showed a main entrance facing uh Kenneth Wall Drive.
This entrance.
Dead entrance, but and it showed a a roof with columns out in front. Um however, uh when you look at the building, none of that's been built and there's really. Gwen, can you kinda trace the path over that gravel lot?
Yeah, so that's.
Really get there.
We thought that this was the main entrance, so we originally had slated out the ADA parking to be right here. Um and unfortunately, this is like a, this is a loading dock ramp, but it's. It's ramped up to the four foot.
Not accessible.
Um and then this area next to it is gravel, so the current path to this entrance from these parking spaces is basically go up. The loading dock ramp, across the gravel, across this concrete equipment pad. And then they have a nice little sidewalk.
The ramp is way over seven percent grade.
Oh, yeah, it would be very difficult to to do anything to call it there.
But that is the ramp they wanna keep for.
Well, we don't know.
Truck access.
They're still using that ramp.
Th- this is, this is our next conversation, so tonight was really to give you an update, we've been doing a lot of work on this. And we just literally were working, Gwen was up all last night, trying to finish these drawings for today. Um but we need to review this with Zach and Northeast Alternatives. We showed it to the building owners yesterday to get their their blessing. Uh and they're, they've been great to work with. So the next step then is to uh present this to Northeast Alternatives, get their input and really kind of um vet those concerns out. Like where is your main entrance, where's the best path for the handicap parking to go, all of those questions.
If they're gonna keep any loading docks?
Yes, they are.
Which ones that they're gonna keep, what are they gonna do with the others, what's it gonna look like?
That's our current understanding, just so you know, is that they are going to keep, they, there's five existing like uh depressed docks right here. Um that they wanna keep the first one in use and that's why we've got this kind of awkward um area of striped. I've got striped islands here instead of curved islands to try and make this really happen. Where a full-size trailer could come up this way, back in here, and then eventually pull straight out into the street.
So it works great for them and we can also get a fire truck out from the red lane.
Yeah, that provides a path.
It comes right out, is it turned, so the fire truck as well?
They've also discussed having some sort of like occasional access, maybe at off times where they would block off some parking. And then give one of the other docks.
Couple of load docks? Will you be filing with conservation to do the work for the parking area?
I believe we need to um.
Is that our consultant's responsibilities to?
Potentially, potentially check, they're, they're definitely, um their responsibility is at least to assist us with that, yeah.
It's fairly flat in there, isn't it?
It's, I wish it was more flat, um it's fairly flat up to about here and then it does start dropping a little more. That's kinda why we've got surface detention proposed over here, is this is kind of the low area. Um there's a swale, there's kind of a berm in front of the wetland and a swale in front of the berm that brings all the water around to this corner and into the wetland. Um so we don't wanna disturb that too much, but we wanna get close to it grade-wise at least.
I was listening to your conversation earlier and you were talking about signage and things. The building owner will put uh probably two new signs out here, one for Juicy and one for Northeast Alternatives. There's uh a sign existing in each location. There's one there for, I think it's for the cold storage building, actually, it's one, there's a penguin on it. Um and then the one for Juicy, uh we had proposed.
Was down here, but.
Yeah, it's in really poor shape. So they'll probably end up putting a whole new sign. Um and we were told not to provide electric to it, so it won't be bright as we were discussing.
No bright sign.
Anyone else? Looks like you're making good progress, I like generally what I see there. Peter?
No, what do we? What do we need tonight, as far as this?
We need an extension on the temporary parking lot, cause you only gave it to us for forty-five days pending the building owner does something.
And so I'm gonna ask both a question, what would you recommend and how much time do you need?
Okay, I can answer the time.
Whatever, what, what are you thinking?
Here's what we're looking at, uh if we can get uh approval on a concept design. And all of the engineering done by July, July or mid-July, uh we would have a couple weeks to bid it. And so we'd be looking sometime in the month of August to start on the permanent changes out here with permanent lots. So we would essentially be taking out the temporary entirely, so we would need it essentially until August.
So um so I would say what's today, middle of May, so middle of June, July. So you know, another forty, uh that's sixty days. So another six, I would say sixty days to come back in for a final review. On the outside, I would suggest probably coming back in sometime in June.
For, will you be ready to come back in in June? Or you're thinking July to come back in?
That's when we would have real documents to show, otherwise it's just gonna be a lot of progress.
Otherwise, we just have like blue on on a site line and it's not really engineered.
Yeah, I'm just trying to be real- realistic, you know, we're we're looking to work with you, cause you you're doing the right thing, so. Would you say it's reasonable to come back in in sixty days for you, your timeframe?
That would be when we would be trying to get our drawings approved anyway, so maybe it could kinda have, that be part of our process is another.
Well, you should, you'd have to get your site point approved before they go for any sort of permits. With the building department or um beyond, you know, beyond what they already have in here. And I know that they're already looking to expand and they're gonna have to file for, to modify their special permits. For each of, so as they expand, if you're involved in the interior expansion. They're gonna have to come to the board of select, selectmen or the. Who does the special permits? They're gonna have to go to the ZBA and it may or may not affect it there and I don't know how they're written.
They only, I think, meet once a month and you probably wanna work to get on the agenda sooner than later.
Yeah, so any change of the interior operation inside, any size really. Is gonna need to go to the ZBA for a um a new special permit. And uh I don't know whether it affects the uh, what's it called?
The host community agreement, that's the board of selectmen.
Right, I don't know whether an expansion affects that host community agreement, I haven't read any of them, so I don't know.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if that's these folks' responsibility as much as it is.
I don't think Juicy is planning to expand, I think Northeast Alternatives is.
The one party we're not hired by in this situation.
That's out of our scope, we're just working with the building owner for the site right now.
I have a capable ZBA acumen. Yeah, it's a little between our two. Yeah, it's the middle between our two meetings.
So that would be an in-person presentation meeting?
I don't know if they're meeting remotely or in person.
Um.
In person.
I don't know.
ZB A in person?
Last meeting was in person, so.
Looks like in person.
Gosh, we have to come back to this beautiful state in the middle of summer.
Yes.
So to me it would seem prudent to say we extend the parking ninety days, which puts you at mid-August. And hopefully we're really close to an approval at that point, it doesn't seem like that might be within the wheelhouse of your.
Yeah.
Schedule for plans?
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Absolutely, because we're under the gun by Juicy, he bet this taken care of.
Okay.
They, uh.
Uh, so.
And the building owners too are anxious to put it all behind them as well. And just everybody's buying and moving out.
All right, so I'll make a motion to extend the, uh, temporary approval on the temporary parking for ninety days from today to mid-August.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Any other action on that?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Um, so we'll wait to hear from you to get back on the planning board agenda. Um, conservation meets twice a month on second and fourth Tuesdays of the month. Um, the agent is in the office, I think, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, uh, Tuesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
Yeah, in the morning.
So, thank you.
You already got one?
I got one.
And you'll have to file a notice of, is the filing here, oh, okay.
Well, it could be an RDA, don't know.
Oh, okay, oh.
Mark, you can help us with that?
Yes.
And, and getting through all the, the forms and the areas.
Yeah, I can help you with that and, um, you know, if there is an agent who does the conservation stuff, but if you have questions about that, or if you can't get ahold of them, let them know.
All right, we good?
I think so.
Very good.
Excellent, thank you for coming in, we appreciate the update.
We appreciate the input.
Look forward to seeing you guys.
This was very helpful for us and, uh, you have a, there actually is a comment that I'm going to bring it up, is about the granite curving. I know it's a very New England, uh, detail and not all of the buildings out here have it, we noticed some have them a little bit of granite curving at the entrance, but a lot of it is just an asphalt curve. Is that?
Cape Cod berm.
A Cape Cod berm?
That's what you're looking at.
Is the, the asphalt curve?
When it rolls up at a, a soft angle.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it sort of divert the water to drain and catch basins, keep it from rolling off the parking lot. Cape Cod berm is what it's called.
Yes, that's, yeah, that's generally acceptable in Lakeville, I guess, I mean, I, I usually prefer to see granite, but it doesn't, it's not too, too common here.
Yeah, I mean, if you have sidewalks and stuff or, you know, and whether it be granite or concrete, curving is nice in those instances, but I understand like where you have your striped islands rather than.
Yeah.
Plowing's a nightmare with that in the middle and, and for you with the truck access. So I get that, and that wouldn't be berm anyway, where you're striping them, but.
Right, and you guys had some pretty major snow this winter too.
Couple times, not too, too bad.
It's pretty mild.
Pretty bad, not bad at all.
Well, that's not bad here though. We saw the house on, we're like, wait, that's out by Lakeville.
And our new field guy who was working, uh, doing some things for Juicy and he, he was originally from Hawaii and then lived in Florida and so he could not wait for it to snow this year. I thought he was kind of crazy.
Probably meant his quota.
He's slightly on quota.
All right, I have, uh, set a minutes for approval for April twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a great night. Uh, did everybody get a chance to review these?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I moved that we approved the minutes from April twenty-first.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, minutes are approved. Um, make the announcement that our next meeting is on May twenty-sixth at twenty-twenty-two, seven P M. That will be at the police station meeting room, so long as it's secure. Yes.
Yes.
Uh, I have a procedural question and I don't want to keep everybody if I don't have to, but I believe that when I did the first two public hearings, I motioned to open them and we didn't second and take a vote, is that a fatal flaw?
No, you guys did.
I did, I motioned and seconded on the third round, but I don't think that we voted on the first two.
Oh, I thought you did. I, I was listening, you, you.
Kind of caught myself after.
You had a motion to open the public hearing and then you read the notice at the same time.
Right, and then we never voted.
Then someone seconded and I thought you voted for all of them.
Did we?
The only one I'm not a hundred percent sure is the first one, about a closure, I know you opened it, should we just for the?
So that's what I'm asking, is just, I could try to do this as rapidly as possible, just to make sure before we close tonight's meeting, to belt and suspenders go through and redo that to bore everybody? All right?
Yeah.
I just hate to have it wrong and then we. So I make a motion to open a public hearing to amend the zoning bylaw, section six point seven, site plan review by deleting the existing section and replacing it with a new section, six point seven, site plan review, which would include the subsections, six point seven point one, purpose, six point seven point two, authority, six point seven point three, applicability, six point seven point four, submittal requirement, six point seven point five, review procedure, six point seven point six, performance standards, six point seven point seven, architectural requirements, and six point seven point eight, decision, inspection, fees, and appeals.
Very good.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Uh, public hearing is properly opened, uh, just to reiterate, we had much discussion about this and after our discussion previously, which may not be considered official, we made a motion, which I will restate, that I make a motion to add open space to the review board list, a motion to amend the performance standards to include six point seven point one point one from the previous site plan review and a motion to recommend approval of the amended six point seven site plan review at town meeting. I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I motion to close the hearing.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing is properly closed now, thank you. Um, that said, we, that conclude all of our business tonight, Mark, I think I've covered the agenda fully, if you had any other announcements?
Sure.
Okay, so I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.